Seven o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. A roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christiansen. Amen.
Here.
Councilmember-elect Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Good evening. I'd like to send a warm welcome to everyone here, Mayor Yanish, councilmembers, our distinguished Judge Spilseth, people in the audience, and of course those smarter people who are at home where it's warm. I would like to invite our newly-elected councilmember to join me out front. The City of Wilmer conducted a special election on February 12th, 2013, which resulted in the citizens of Ward Four electing a new councilmember for the remaining term through January 12th, 2015. That individual was Audrey Nelson, and as City Clerk and chief official in charge of voting, I would like to take the opportunity to present to Audrey a certificate which reads, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Wilmer and State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that at a special election held in the city and state on Tuesday being the 12th day of February 2013, Audrey Nelson received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember, Fourth Ward, in the City of Wilmer, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to set office as appears from the official election returns and canvas on file in my office."
And now, it's my pleasure as Judge Spilseth to swear you in. If you'd come forward if you wouldn't mind, raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Audrey Nelson..."
"I, Audrey Nelson."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the constitutions of the United States and of the State of Minnesota..."
"...that I support the constitutions of the United States and of the State of Minnesota..."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter..."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully..."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer..."
"...the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
"...and this I do under the penalties of perjury."
"...and this I do under the penalties of perjury."
Congratulations, Audrey. Councilmember, I, Audrey Nelson.
Thank you.[235.12][235.12](APPLAUSE).
I need this from you, Audrey, and I will sign it. Thank you, Judge, for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Counsel?
You. And congratulations, Audrey.
Thank you.
And welcome to the City Council. With that, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to...
Go ahead.
One item under Ms. Laney, please.
One item under Ms. Laney?
Yes, if I could, please.
Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to pull from, pull the Planning Commission minutes of February 13th to discuss item number four, which is the Wilmer Legacy Properties Plan Review Conditional File, number 12-10.
Are there any others?
I would move approval, less item C.
Less the...
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written, less the Planning Commission minutes of February 13th, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just would like some information on what's happening. This reads that John Hafner of City Edge Architects and Tom Torgerson, Tom Torgerson of Torgerson Property discussed an issue with carrying out one of the planning commission conditions on the Wilmer Legacy Properties Project. Plan approval from November 14th, 2012, specifically Condition E. The property owner shall receive easements or permission, permission slash permit to drain pits onto abutting property. Mr. Hafner explained that they have been working diligently to meet all of the conditions for approval. However, condition letter E has been difficult, as one of the abutting property owners has yet to agree to the drainage easement. And I'm just wondering where that is, Mr. Mayor, and are we making progress on it?
I would ask Public Works or Kevin?
I'll defer that to Mr. Peterson to respond.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the condition was placed on the project by the Planning Commission when they did their initial review, really as an extreme case of managing stormwater flow on the property. Since that time, we've, or it's been determined that the amount of impurity surface will actually decrease by this project, and so the existing drainage conditions or drainage improvements that exist on the site are adequate. It's extremely important to note that the historic flow of drainage off this site has always been across the other property, and that will not change by this project. The rate of flow will be reduced, and the amount of flow will not increase. For that reason, the Planning Commission felt it was appropriate to eliminate that condition, and that it really wasn't warranted based on the way the final plans were developed. Thank you.
Is that, that's how you call?
That's fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Approval?
I'll move to approve that item.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Planning Commission minutes of February 13th, 2013, all those, is there any discussion? That being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Bruce, would you like to discuss the scheduled hearings for us, please? I would like to, if I may, open the hearing. I will open the hearing.
Okay. Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the first hearing tonight has to do with the PFA facility plan for the Minwest Lift Station and Lakeland Drive Interceptor Sewer Project. Several years ago, the council adopted a facilities plan when the new wastewater treatment plant and conveyance system was being constructed. The proposed improvements at Minwest and on Lakeland Drive required amendments to that plan, and plan amendments as a matter of procedure require a public hearing, and that's what brings us here tonight. And here to present the plan update, the plan amendments, is Paul Jurick from Bolligan
Thank you, Bruce. Just a little presentation to update the council on where we're at with the facilities plan, and there's also the environmental information worksheet that goes along with that. The facility plan is required by the Public Facilities Authority, the PFA, and it's to update the 2006 comprehensive plan, as Bruce mentioned. Updates the service area and the system capacity needs for the state hospital lift station and the Lakeland Drive Interceptor, down Lakeland Drive. And this will qualify the city for placement on the project priority list, the PPL, to obtain a low-interest loan. The environmental information worksheet is required by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and it reviews the project purpose, the impacts to wildlife, water resources, the environment, if any, caused by the project, and it recommends any procedures to minimize any impacts to the environment. Here's our existing sanitary sewer system in Wilmer, a little bit closer here. On the east side, the, kind of the thick line there in purple is the interceptor. The area in dark there is Forest Main, and just on the north side of that dark line is the lift station we're looking at to replace with this project. This is the service area we study, or this is the existing. The next slide here shows Alternative One in the area we've been studying. Starts out with a 15-inch pipe from the Eagle Lake area. It takes effluent from there and goes south down to Wilmer Avenue. It's divided in two phases. The dotted lines show Phase Two going towards the old wastewater facility plant, and then it eventually all goes down to 28th Avenue on the south side there, down by the dotted line in red, and the Phase Two is shown there with some gravity going into a lift station and then into the 28th Avenue south. Probable project costs for the Phase One and Two there, you can see $6 million approximately, $3 million for Phase Two with some contingency and some other costs in there, the project cost is $11.3 million. The second alternative we looked at, real similar again, looking at the Lakeland Drive Interceptor, but this one goes straight south of Wilmer Avenue, Phase Two there, and into 28th Avenue. And again, the project costs are shown there for Phase One and Phase Two, and the total project cost is $10.6 million. So the recommended alternative, Alternative Number Two, bypasses the old wastewater facility site, and it does avoid going through a lot of city streets. That's why it's a little bit less expensive, and it will serve future flows on the east side of the city all by gravity. Our upcoming schedule, tonight we have the public hearing, and then we need to pass a resolution tonight to approve us submitting the facilities plan to the MPCA along with the EIW, and then hopefully getting approval on the 7th, and then plans and specs next March, around this time next March, and then project construction in 2014. And are there any questions?
I will throw it open to the audience if there are any questions for Paul, please.
This is for how many years in the future are you planning here?
Well, generally, we look at 80-year life, around that area.
Eight?
Yeah, for the facilities we put in, a lot of the PVC pipe and things like that we're choosing for.
And you got to the one yet, or you have any consideration for the road improvement also?
That's kind of our next step. This is just to secure funding for the sewer portion, and then more, most likely in May or June, we're going to be looking at the roadway in more detail at that time.
Do you have any idea what kind of a road structure you're going to be planning here?
That's something we're going to probably study and look at with the city.
On Thursday, as a matter of fact, we have a meeting.
Okay. So we'll be looking at, you know, traffic volumes and capacities and that sort of things, turn lanes.
When you look at traffic...
Jerry, if I can get you, do you have further questions? Please come up to the podium.
My name is Jerry Gesh. I live at 1200 Southeast Wilmer Avenue. My concern here is the long-term concern for the Lakeland Drive. First Street now is pretty much filled up traffic-wise, and I believe in the future there's going to be a lot of traffic on Lakeland Drive. And I really hope that, what I'd really like to see is Lakeland Drive to follow the kind of road that Wilmer Avenue is. There's so much undeveloped property alongside this road, and there's a lot of business traffic to the south side of Wilmer and coming down First Street. There's two alternatives, there's First Street now or the bypass. But I do believe that there, in the future, there will be a lot more traffic on Lakeland Drive than there is presently here. I realize there's a couple problems there, the railroad and Highway 12, but I think they can be worked around. But I'm not an engineer or anything, but I really believe in the future that's going to be a high-traffic road that should be really considered for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brian Bollig, President of Bollig Inc., and just reiterate, I guess, and touch base with what Jerry had mentioned. The original scope of work was to replace the roadway as is. But if the city is all concerned about additional traffic and how that might come down Lakeland Drive, now would be the time to take a second look at Lakeland and determine if additional expansion of Lakeland Drive is necessary.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the audience? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it for discussion. Please don't run away. Open it for discussion with the council. Councilman Norman?
Thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for your work to this point. You had a $906,000 contingency. Is that approximately 10% of the budget?
Right now, in the facility plan, it gives a range of 30 to 50%, and the number, I can maybe just go back here, the contingency, oh, help me out with my math here, it's, I think we're at about 15% there.
Okay. And usually, what would that include? Changes that we might make? Is that what you're predicting with all the...
It could be a number of things. It really varies from project to project. If, you know, it could be changes in the field throughout the whole entire project. Could be earlier during design or in construction of unforeseen condition, things like that.
The other comment I'd just like to make briefly, there's, I agree with Mr. Gesh who spoke. I had an opportunity, he was walking out of the office, City Offices today, and I was walking in, and I talked to him briefly, and that's in the war that I represent. But I agree with him completely that that avenue or thoroughfare is going to be a very, very highly-traffic area, and consideration of how we're going to deal with the parking, on-street parking, it definitely is a big concern of mine as the volume base increases on those roads. The other concern I mentioned at the Public Works Committee meeting was the possibility, and if you've had a chance to look into it, Northern Natural Gas on the southeast side of the road right off Wilmer Avenue, as far as broadening that into a right-turn lane similar to the right-turn lane that we have, if you're heading south on Lakeland Drive on to Wilmer Avenue, there's a nice, it kind of helps relieve the traffic pressure and keeps the traffic moving. I just wonder if you had any thoughts on that, or have you...
That was brought up before, and we have not looked into it in any more detail, but those will be things that we'll be looking into in the next coming months here. I like to hear all the comments now. You get a feel for what people are thinking and the needs out there, and a lot of them are good comments too, so.
One other question, was there any consideration, or are you giving any consideration to a more, a type of street that's more environmentally friendly for pedestrians and bike traffic? Is that something we need to consider, or has that been discussed?
I think there's a corridor between, you know, it's around Trot Avenue there where it's the neighborhood, and then how it develops further south to the YMCA that would definitely take all those into consideration. Really, the whole corridor should take the complete street. There's been talk about a bike trail and, you know, the sidewalks being complete all the way from beginning to end, so those all, will be, all things will be looking at.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a question?
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being here. This might be more a question for staff, but when we pay for this, will any of that be assessed, the replacement of the roadway, or is this strictly going to be paid for by the users?
I would, I think we would look at our assessment policy, and it would be handled in that way, when we get to the street part, yes, the street portion of it.
Okay.
And the, obviously, the utility will be paid for, and the lift stations such would be coming out of the wastewater utility fund, or, you know, the debt service for that would be out of the wastewater utility fund.
But this is ultimately going to have an impact on the users of the wastewater treatment, our treatment rates are going to be going up, and this will be adding to that? Is that correct?
This has been factored into the potential, into the rate study that we've been, that we have looked at and such, yes. I mean, there's two components to this project, which is the utility portion, and then there is the street design, because again, when we're doing utility work, that's the opportunity to also do the work for the streets and such, and the street would not be done, would be handled as a street project or through the assessment.
I understand. I guess what I'd like to know ultimately is, of the $11 million, for instance, how much is going to be paid for by the users of the wastewater treatment plant, and what kind of an impact? And I know you don't have that now, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure if Paul can break that out as to how much of you, that project is utility versus road improvement at this point?
Right now, these, this is for the, if you had to replace the sewer line, and even some of the roadway costs above that, but it doesn't go any wider beyond that.
Okay.
So, and there's also some state aid funding we're looking at as well on that, so.
Okay. I guess the bottom line to me is, this is a big expense, and it, there will be an impact on the users of the waste treatment plant, and the rates that are going to be forthcoming there are going to be a lot. I just wonder if this is the time to do it, and I don't expect any answer, but that's a question I have in my mind, if we should be doing this or if we should be holding back, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman DeBlique?
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, you've got this laid out, there's two alternatives for the project.
Right.
Alternative One, Alternative Two. At what point in time do we have to select which alternative we're going to focus on?
And that, that would be tonight, to pass the resolution on moving forward with the facilities plan on which direction we want to take there.
Okay. And then the Alternative Two, that's basically what, $10.7 million?
Right.
How firm is that? Is that, or that project would be done in one, two years completed? Is that in today's dollars, or is that in dollars?
I would say that's, it would be in today's dollars, and the timeframe would be one year. Is that one question you had? I think we could make the contractor get it done in one year, and the estimate, you know, it's a preliminary planning estimate, I'll call it, and it's, you know, kind of a 30 to 50% range, we kind of call it for, in looking at today's costs.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming tonight, Paul. So what exactly is the difference between the first plan and the second plan?
This is, let's see, this is Alternative Two, and this goes pretty much straight south with the 36-inch by gravity into 28th, and then if you look at the other one, it diverts off to the west there, taking the old wastewater treatment route. And then there's some smaller items that you, to make apples to apples, to pick up the same service area, you have to add a little lift station for that area south of Walmart there, and to collect, I'll just say near Pizza Ranch, some of those items, so to make it, the alternatives equal that way. And the, in talking with the city, they did have some platted areas and some things when Walmart was done, and this was kind of their direction, they laid out for one of our alternatives to look at, so.
So when you say city staff, the former engineer, or...
It was, we sat down with Colleen and Curly and Bruce Peterson and...
Here, Councilmember Fagerly. I believe this is part of the comprehensive transportation plan, is to extend 28th Avenue and bring it up towards the Pizza Ranch area and connect into Lakeland Drive. So it completes the transportation plan, it follows that route, you're going to need sewer service along that route anyway. The biggest difference, I guess, today for Phase One for both alternatives is they're both going to turn at Olina, which is just north of the YMCA, and come into an existing manhole. The only difference really for today is this option, Option Two, would extend a dead-end line from Olina down to Wilmer Avenue and just keep it in place for when the city extends 28th Avenue. When that happens, then that sewer underneath would collect and be tied into that, and then all the sewer would be routed south directly to the 28th Avenue in bypass, going through the urbanized area.
Okay. So are we eliminating some lift stations then?
Well, Alternative Two eliminates a smaller lift station down on the south end that would otherwise be required to service really some undeveloped properties. Essentially, I'm sorry, we don't have a pointer here, but on the southeast corner of Wilmer Avenue and Lakeland Drive, that area is very low. The sewer would be deep enough to pick that area up without a lift station.
So right now, we have, what, one lift station existing for that area?
There aren't any right now.
It's all gravity?
It's, well, there's nothing out there developed right now, so nobody's, if somebody were to develop, they couldn't get it in to the sewer without lifting it right now. But this system, Alternative Two, they could get it there by gravity.
Okay. And then that fee of, cost of $10 million something, doesn't include the quiet zone at the railroad tracks? No easement right-of-way purchasing, anything like that? This is just for underground work and...
That's correct.
Okay.
No, it's, again, it's, the 2014 construction would not be the $10 million, it would be in that $6 million range for 2004. That's the Phase Two that adds that considerable dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of the questions that have been asked tonight, Mr. Bollig, you mentioned it was not within the scope of services. Can you, can you tell us more about the questions that have been asked? Which ones would not be within the original scope of services on this project?
Well, right now, we're talking about the facility plan.
Right.
And that's the utilities. And so the design of the utilities is included in the scope of services from the lift station all the way down to Wilmer Avenue. So the Phase One portion is all included in the original scope. It's just that if the city wanted to consider expansion of Lakeland Drive to something other than it is today, then that needs to be looked at to determine how and what the city really wants to do there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? What type of action do we need to take tonight, Kevin?
Resolution about Option Two.
It's a standard resolution approving the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Facility Plan Amendment.
Do we need to determine option one or option two?
By approving the facilities plan, the recommended alternative is alternative two, so that would be in there. By approving the facilities plan, that would move that alternative forward.
Mr. Mayor, is the hearing closed? I'm sorry, yes, the hearing is closed.
I'll introduce, be a resolution to accept the facilities plan for Lakeland Drive Interceptor Midwest Whip Station Project and submittals of the facilities plan to the Minnesota Housing and Control Agency.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the facilities resolution plan roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeWig?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move into hearing number two. Bruce, would you like to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the improvement hearing tonight is an important part of our annual improvement process and in fact is required by Minnesota statutes, chapter 429. This is a hearing to present all of the proposed projects, both new construction, reconstruction, and overlays and miscellaneous projects proposed for the year 2013. Presenting the projects tonight is Jared Vogi of Bolton &amp; Mank, who serves as our interim city engineer.
If I did not open the hearing, the hearing is open.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you this evening, as Bruce indicated, is the public hearing for the 2013 improvements project. I wanted to start first by the position statement adopted by the city, and it is the city's position to seek the input of citizens and members of the public in the decision-making process. The purpose of the hearing this evening is to explain the improvements, the associated costs, and then essentially obtain the public's comments regarding those proposed improvements and costs. The hearing agenda, the hearing has been opened, as indicated by the mayor. I'll present the projects. As I go through these projects, we have reconstruction projects, we have overlays, and we have miscellaneous projects. As part of the reconstruction and overlay projects, I'll pause between the specific sections to provide an opportunity for the residents that might be affected by that specific project to come up and ask their questions at that time. After all the public comment has been received at that point, then it would be appropriate to, to close the public hearing. The improvements being discussed for 2013 consist of reconstruction, overlay, new construction, miscellaneous projects, so there's a variety of different project types, if you will, for the 2013 improvements. The 2013 project areas are identified up there on the screen. You'll note that the improvements are generally south of Highway 12, scattered between the western, central, and eastern portions of the city. The first project type this evening we're going to discuss is reconstruction. Essentially, what reconstruction is or consists of is the removal of the existing street surface, the existing concrete curb and gutter, replacement of the water main, sanitary sewer, and utilities, city utilities beneath that street surface, storm sewer improvements, and then after the utilities are completed, the roadway gets built back up with the aggregate base, new curb and gutter, pavement, and then finally turf restoration. The reconstruction program currently for, as planned for 2013 consists of approximately 1.3 miles of street reconstruction. The first project area is Second Street southeast between Wilmer Avenue and Olina Avenue, and it's identified on the, on the screen up there. The, with this project, one of the little bit unique characteristics of this project is the existing curb and gutter along this project area is in relatively good shape, so not all of it will be removed. It will be evaluated during the design process as to which portions are removed, so that the, as much of the existing curb can be saved as possible. So with that, it would be appropriate time for any residents here that have a question regarding Second Street southeast to present them to the council.
Are there any questions in regards to Second Street southeast and Wilmer Avenue to Olina Avenue? I don't see any questions.
The next project area is Candy Ohi Avenue southwest between Seventh Street and First Street. This project area would consist of a total reconstruction with the removal of the batuminous surface, the curb and gutter, and the reconstruction of utilities. That project area is also identified on the screen. And then Candy Ohi Avenue southwest between 15th Street and 11th Street, total reconstruction. Any residents with questions regarding Candy Ohi Avenue? I would remind the residents that come forward to state their name and address for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Knutson, and I live at 722 Second Street southwest on the corner of Candy Ohi and Second Street, one block west of First Street. Will the new sewer lines that you're putting in, will that take care of the current flooding that we have now? Because every time the heavy rains, I have water up to my front steps. After several days of very heavy rain, I have water coming up through the cracks of my basement. I don't want to have happen what happened at the corner of Candy Ohi and 10th Street several years ago. I've looked into getting flood insurance, I can't. So will the new sewer lines take care of that situation? If we're putting all that money into redoing streets, will that take care of it?
Can I put that to...
Mr. Vogi will answer that if you allow him.
Mayor, council, Ms. Knutson, the, the street improvement project, the storm sewer improvements being considered as part of that project will evaluate the existing drainage areas, and everything possible will be done to alleviate as much of that stormwater concern as possible. The larger, the larger issue overall is the existing system downstream. So this, the system will evaluate that, but I'm not going to stand before you this evening and promise that it'll eliminate all of the concerns related to stormwater in that area.
Thank you. Does that answer your question or...
Oh, it does, but it sounds like you're passing buck. So those of us who have to live with this, you're spending $5.2 million to do all this roadwork in town, but you're really not addressing the original problem.
Well, we're addressing the original problem, if I may, in another manner, other than the streets. And Bruce, if you can comment on that, you know more about that than I do.
The council, just to remind the council and the public that there are ongoing efforts to make overall improvements to the stormwater system, and as pointed out by Mr. Vogi, the big issue for this particular section of town is the downstream drainage in County Ditch 23A, and the city currently only has very little control over portions of that ditch system because the bulk of that system is outside the city limits, and we do not control outlet elevations. So to the best of the city's ability, we're always working to make improvements inside the city of Wilmer to accommodate existing and additional flows so that we can control the, the impact of stormwater on residential properties. There are certain parts of town that without millions and millions of dollars being spent will continue to have short-term residential water issues, and there are a very limited number of ways in which those issues can be addressed without the expense of millions and millions of dollars in the city of Wilmer and further downstream. But again, we continue to do what we can within the city of Wilmer to make the improvements for our citizens.
Thank you, Bruce. Go ahead.
Those are all the comments regarding Candy Ohi Avenue. The next street project, street reconstruction project is Sixth Street southwest between Robbins Avenue and Trot Avenue. That's approximately six blocks of roadway reconstruction. With that, I'll pause for any questions regarding Sixth Street southwest.
Does anyone have any questions in regards to Sixth Street southwest? If not, go ahead.
The next...
Go ahead, I'm sorry. We have a council...
Is it okay or you want us to come back?
Look, come back to that.
Well, just getting back briefly to Mrs. Knutson's issue on the area town and not having the flood insurance and also the ongoing effort, the stormwater that Mr. Peterson alluded to. I know that the expense to solve the stormwater issue is going to be very, very, very expensive to taxpayers in Wilmer, but the water flood and the plane all comes down our direction, and we get it from Candy Ohi and the whole surrounding area that comes through our city and out through County Ditch 23A. My concern is, I know that in other areas, I believe one of the banks in town here on First Street created an underground storage container area to help with some of the excess flooding that they had in that area, to use it for other purposes, I think, too, they might even be using it for sprinkling in the lawn afterwards to collect their stormwater. Have you at all experienced a type of construction project where they've included like a baffling system of a series of underground storage containers to hold back that water or to help store the water until the, the water would dissipate further downstream?
I have had experience with that, yes. Couple, couple things with that, the soil types are, play a major role in that type of process. Essentially, in clay soils, you're going to have underground detention. It won't infiltrate, it won't go away. In other areas of the state where there's sandy soils with higher permeability rates, that type of system is much more effective because it allows the water to dissipate into the ground and be absorbed somewhat by the ground before it's discharged through the pipe in a baffling system. So currently, I can't, as the plans have not been finalized yet, that really has not been included in, in those plans. I think the, as Mr. Peterson alluded to, the larger overall issue is the downstream drainage and reductions, essentially that's why we review all these applications that come, come before the city, to make sure that we're not increasing the rate and volume at which water is discharged into the city's system. These improvements don't increase the rate or volume, but certainly as part of the plan preparation process, we can investigate other alternatives to perhaps reduce that burden on the existing system.
So in other words, would she...
Can we address this afterwards, let the audience speak first?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead.
Havana Street northeast between High Avenue and the northern, northern limits of Havana Street. One of the unique characteristics of this street is the center median in Havana Street, and currently that median is proposed to remain in place based on survey information obtained from the residents in that area. So that is one characteristic of this street that's different than the other reconstruction portions. And with that, I'll pause for any questions from the public regarding Havana Street.
Is there anyone here to speak about Havana Street? Please come up and identify yourself, please.
My name's Ronald Rain, I own the residence at 209 Havana Street. One thing when they're, we all want to keep that center median intact, it's very unique to Sperryville, it's been there for many years. But one thing I do want to address is at the back of my property runs an alley, and my neighbor to the north, that's where her sewer comes to the back of my driveway to an access. When they redo the sewer, is she going to be able to be hooked up to the one in front of the house? Because I can't do anything to my driveway as far as regrading it or anything, because I got a manhole right down at the bottom of my driveway, and I guess that's my biggest concern.
I guess I don't know that. Bruce, do you have information on that?
There are two residences on Havana that currently have their sewer services from a different direction, and it's the intent of this project to provide the services from Havana that would allow those homeowners the opportunity to connect to the Havana mains.
Okay, and who, where would the cost be if we relocated to the front? Would that be assumed in this project, or would that be part of the homeowner's issue?
That would be the homeowner's responsibility under our assessment policy.
That's all I wanted, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further for Havana Street?
And finally, the last reconstruction project proposed for the 2013 improvements includes the city parking lot just east of, east of City Hall. The next project classification this evening are overlay projects. Essentially, what an overlay consists of is milling or removing one and a half to two inches of the existing batuminous surface, replacing any concrete curb and gutter that is deficient or sagging, cracked, as determined out in the field. In some instances in our overlay projects, we're looking at installing drain tile to alleviate some of the subsurface moisture, which is contributing to the pavement conditions. And then finally, after that work is, is completed, the, the surface would be overlaid with one and a half to two inches of batuminous over that street surface. Currently, as part of the 2013 improvements, approximately 3.2 miles of street are being proposed for, for overlay. The first portion of the project consists of Trot Avenue between 28th Street and Industrial Drive, and then 23rd Street between Airport Drive and Trot Avenue. I'll pause if there's any property owners here that might have questions.
Are there any property owners that would like to comment on that? Hearing none, we'll go ahead.
The next overlay area being discussed is Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue, Third Avenue between 28th Street and the eastern cul-de-sac, the turnaround that you see on the screen, and then Fourth Avenue between 28th Street and Third Avenue. With that, I'll pause for any comments.
Any comments on Third Avenue or Fourth Avenue? Go ahead.
The next area being considered for overlay as part of the 2013 improvements are the trunk highway 12 East Service Drives, the service drive on the north side extending from Litchfield Avenue to Lakeland Drive, and then the south service drive between Farring Street and Lakeland Drive. I'll pause for any property owners. I'll pause for any property owners along there.
Go ahead.
Another area of town proposed for overlay improvements includes the streets in the Ordenblad and Southgate additions area. 22nd Street Southwest between 21st Avenue and 19th Avenue, as well as 22nd between Williams Parkway and 22nd Avenue Southwest. Also includes 23rd Street, 24th Street, 22nd Avenue Southwest, and Williams Parkway Southwest. I'll also pause for-
Any comments on any of that? Go ahead.
There are also some new construction projects planned as part of the 2013 improvements. They consist of Wilmer Avenue Southwest between Industrial Boulevard and 22nd Street. There is a bituminous path proposed along that Wilmer Avenue alignment also between County Road 5 and 22nd Street. And then the Fourth Avenue Southwest project, which we'll see here in just a second. The Wilmer Avenue Southwest project essentially connects, as indicated in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, to 22nd Street and continues northwest across the existing railroad tracks, across Industrial Drive, and connects to the existing Wilmer Avenue, which is identified in the more, in the gray tone at the northwest corner of the screen. The improvements, and I have one more slide for that. The improvements proposed here consist not only of roadway construction, but it also includes improvements consisting of concrete medians and railroad crossing system and signal improvements. The concrete medians are being installed and the signals are being designed to further the city's goal of the establishment of a quiet zone throughout the community. So the concrete medians, you can see near the railroad track. There will also be some medians on Industrial Drive for traffic channelization. Any questions on Wilmer Avenue?
Are there any questions out there from the audience?
The next new construction project is the Fourth Avenue Southwest project. Essentially, it's roadway construction to provide for the development of, or the future development of lots in that area. Will consist of all streets and utilities, storm sewer. You'll note that a pond is being proposed as part of that improvement as well. Any questions on Fourth Avenue Southwest? Some miscellaneous projects that are included in the 2013 improvements include the downtown to Robbins Island Trail connection, the Trotta Avenue overlay in Quiet Zone, the Wilmer Avenue Southwest overlay, and then a portion of sidewalk along 11th Avenue Southeast from the middle school to Sixth Street. The slide up on the screen right now identifies the downtown and Robbins Island Trail connection. Essentially, the trail provides a connection between the downtown and the existing trail near Ella Avenue. This project is Trotta Avenue Southwest project. Trotta Avenue will be overlaid from Industrial Drive on the left-hand side of the screen east to 16th Street. But also as part of this project, concrete medians and railroad crossing improvements will be incorporated as part of the quiet zone establishment process. The 11th Avenue sidewalk is pretty straightforward. It's five-foot concrete walk extension to Sixth Street Southeast along the south side of 11th Avenue. The Wilmer Avenue Southwest overlay is essentially the installation of the final lift or the bituminous wearing course on that portion of Wilmer Avenue, which was previously constructed. Also with that, and as mentioned previously, there will be a bituminous trail that extends from County Road 5 to 22nd Street as part of those improvements. Any questions on the miscellaneous or new projects?
Are there any further questions? Thank you.
The anticipated project schedule this evening is the improvement hearing. Providing council chooses to move forward with these improvements, we're anticipating that bids would be led in April, which would provide an opportunity to receive the costs, the actual project costs, from contractors. At that point, we had prepared that information for an assessment hearing to be held in mid-May. After the assessment hearing, if council elects to award the contract, then in June, the project could be awarded, which would allow construction to begin in late June or early July. Construction is also, as part of these projects, will be completed this November. The estimated project costs as prepared in December of 2012 are identified on the screen. The total estimated project cost for the reconstruction, overlay, and new construction and miscellaneous projects is approximately $5,295,000. Right. Also have a couple of commonly asked questions that I just wanted to review for the public. First one is, when will work start and what's, when will it be completed? As indicated, we're anticipating that if everything moves forward, construction will begin in late June and be completed in November. The, prior to the improvements taking place, city staff typically hands out individual notices to all the property owners three to five days in advance so that property owners are aware that the project is occurring. And honestly, there'll be a significant number of times that those, these projects are presented to the council, so they'll also have that opportunity to stay abreast of what's going on. The assessment pay schedule and procedure, essentially the project costs are assessed over a 10-year period. However, residents and property owners do have the opportunity to pay the entire assessment prior to it being placed on their taxes. Essentially, if the assessment that's levied against the property for the improvement project is not paid prior to April 31st, then it's certified to the county, added to the 2014 tax statement. Now, there is an option for property owners to prepay a portion of those assessments also prior to October 31st, essentially saving the interest on that portion of their assessment. And then in the following years, if the assessment's levied on your 2014 taxes, you've elected not to prepay or pay it off. Prior to, I believe it's November 15th of each year, a minimum prepayment of $1,500 can be made towards the existing assessment. Question regarding access to residents during construction. Typically, the access is provided each evening. Now, there will be instances undoubtedly during construction that residents won't be able to get to their driveway every single evening. That's just weather dependent and construction schedule dependent. But for the most part, all the residents will be able to get in their driveways each evening. And then finally, will the street be paved this year? Yes, it will be paved this year. Typically, in our reconstruction program, we, when the utilities are being replaced, due to the nature of the construction and the depth that the utilities are installed, typically we leave the bituminous wearing course or that final lift of asphalt off of the street. That allows an opportunity to identify any settlements in the roadway prior to putting that bituminous wearing course on. Those settlements can be corrected. The bituminous wear course goes on and you don't have a patch in the brand-new street at that point. Usually, we get some questions about detours, dust control, and other conveniences. Dust control will be incorporated into every contract, every project that we've discussed this evening. We'll have a provision where the contractor will be responsible to provide that dust control. The streets will remain open to traffic during most of the project. And again, on the reconstruction projects, those roadways are going to be open to local traffic only. We're not going to allow those to be open for, through traffic other than the residents in that area. Also, when the concrete is poured, or the concrete is replaced in front of residents' properties, that curb needs to cure for a period of up to 10 days. So there will be a portion when residents won't be able to drive across that curb until that is fully cured. Driveways also, sometimes get some questions about widening existing driveways or perhaps relocating them. As part of the project, that will be an option for residents. They're just asked to contact the city engineer's office, City Hall, and those accommodations can be met. I will indicate that the maximum residential driveway width is 24 feet, so it's not a wide-open driveway width, but certainly if there's a 12-foot driveway out there and the resident would like it widened, that's an option. Another important item, underground sprinkler systems. As part of that notification process prior to construction, it would, I would recommend that residents remove their sprinkler systems from within the right-of-way as the city is not going to be responsible for damage caused to them. They're private improvements within the existing city right-of-way. So ample opportunity will be provided to those residents to pull those facilities back, perhaps plug the ends of them and turn off that zone, if you will. But that information will be provided and residents will have the opportunity to do that. And again, the schedule is identified on the screen. Warranty period for the street is one year, three years for the utilities. If there are any questions during the, prior to or during the construction project, we just ask that residents contact City Hall. There's a variety of numbers up there. Also can send a letter. Very available for resident concerns. So with that, Mayor Council, I'll answer any questions that you might have prior to the closing of the public hearing.
At this point, I will ask if the audience has any questions or comments. Now's the time. I don't hear any, so I will close the public hearing and open the hearings or open it to discussion amongst the council.
Councilman Leake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you prepare the plans and specifications, is there going to be an alternate alternative to bituminous? Are we going to look at a concrete alternate for these roadways?
Currently, at this point, we have not considered an alternate. It's something that we can investigate. However, the projects as they're identified right now will consist of bituminous.
I know with the, you know, the increasing cost of bituminous, concrete is becoming a more and more cost-conscious, this alternate. I would hope we would look at that as well. And then, under the Pacific Projects himself, Havana Street Northeast, we're going to remove the concrete, the center island from that roadway? Is that part of the-
No, the center island will remain. The curb around it will need to be replaced as a result of the utility construction and the existing street grades. However, that island was identified as an important component to Havana Street by the residents, so that will remain in place. There's some existing lights and trees in there as well, so.
I'm glad to hear that. I'd heard that it was going to be moved at one point in time, but-
The plan is to keep it in there.
Thank you. Okay. And then with the service drives on Highway 12, there is, you're looking at replace or re, doing an overlay on the service drives. Is there a state project plan for Highway 12 itself in the near future out in that area?
Not that I'm aware of. That portion of Highway 12 right there, I believe, was just overlaid here last year or the year prior. But we can certainly check with, check with Mindet on that.
Okay.
Think that will be discussed. Am I right, Brian? Okay.
Then one final question on the trail. As it proceeds north from the bridge, crosses the intersection of Lena Avenue and down along the lake, is that going to be an on-grade crossing on the roadway there where that trail will cross?
At Ella?
Ella and the signal lights, I think you showed it as.
Currently, currently there is no elevated trail plan for that. And I guess I, not sure if I fully understand your question.
Well, that will cross right at the signal lights on that, at that intersection? Is that where that trail's going to cross?
Yes.
Okay. I know at one point in time-
The west-
We had discussed that being a below-grade crossing there, a tunnel or some type of crossing to separate the pedestrian traffic from the vehicle traffic along there because that intersection is, you know, a double Y, so that is, you're crossing actually three lanes, four lanes of traffic there.
The pedestrian movements will be improved at that intersection. However, currently, there's no grade separation proposed as part of that project.
Okay.
Further questions? Comments? Councilman Taggert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for presenting the report to us. Tile and tile services, is that sump pump tile for property owners?
Yes. Yes. That provides an opportunity for discharge.
And I see all of them have it except Sixth Street and Robbins. Was that just oversight? So they'll be installed too for the residents?
I can, I will look into that for you, Councilmember Figurley. I don't have that right in front of me. But essentially, wherever drain tile can be installed, we're evaluating that and looking at installing that.
Okay. And then when you reconstruct, do you replace the stormwater lines to underground?
The storm sewer lines, yes.
Not the storm sewer?
Yes. Essentially, the storm sewer consists of pipes and catch basins and manholes as part of that process. Typically, the sanitary sewer and water main is significantly deeper than the storm sewer is. So when the sanitary sewer and water main are removed, essentially the storm sewer removes itself due to the excavation. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but the existing pipes and catch basins in most instances will be replaced.
Okay. Do you put in larger pipes then?
Well, the, as part of every project, a drainage analysis is required because essentially if, simply increasing the size of pipe will not alleviate any concerns relative to the storm sewer if the system downstream is not sized adequately to accommodate that. sized adequately to accommodate that. Now, certainly, we look into the future to see if there are future improvements downstream that will someday help alleviate that and plan accordingly at this time, but I can't say definitively that all the pipes will be increased in size as part of these projects.
Okay, because I thought the Stormwater Task Force had said we should enlarge the pipes when we have a chance to, so that they're there in the future, so.
That's exactly what I, what I'm referring to. So as part of the overall plan for the storm sewer system, if these project areas would help alleviate some of the existing stormwater concerns, then certainly, those pipes will be upsized.
Okay. And then I have a question on Wilmer Avenue. You had those orange boxes on that one diagram. Okay, there. The orange boxes, what are they? Existing road going to Jennio?
Oh, yeah, the orange dashed line.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, that's the existing Wilmer Avenue alignment.
Okay, so that's going to be eliminated?
That will be eliminated. There will be some barricades installed.
Okay. Because we're not giving up the easement.
The easement is being retained at this point. There's been no discussion about anything associated with vacating any easements. There's a significant number of utilities that exist in that corridor, so it's likely that those easements will remain for quite some time.
Okay. So will there be a walking path where that line is now? And if there is, how does that affect the quiet zone, then? Because it'd be kind of dangerous.
Well, as part of the Wilmer Avenue improvements, there will be a bituminous trail that extends from 22nd Street along Wilmer Avenue all the way out to County Road 5. Also, will be tying into an existing, an existing trail that's out there right now and bringing that over to Wilmer Avenue. The primary crossing of the railroad is going to be at the roadway crossing.
Okay.
And that, that crossing, or that trail crossing, is being incorporated into the railroad improvements, widening, not widening, it's a new crossing, but it'll be wide enough to accommodate a trail crossing in addition to the roadway crossing.
So they'll have to cross where the quiet zone is, and the guards will be?
Yes.
Do you know some people won't do that, though?
Even with that crossing, I'm pretty sure some people will cross it elsewhere.
Counselman Dacken, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I note that we're doing 3.2 miles of overlay. That's 13 different streets and avenues, and I know that the mayor requested and added $240,000. How many additional streets would that be approximately of the 13? How many?
I don't have that information for you this evening. I'd be happy to provide that to you tomorrow.
I think we estimated about an additional mile of overlay was being done.
Okay. From previous.
An additional mile, when we planned the budget, I think we had estimated that would essentially prepay for an additional mile of overlay.
So it's a mile above historically what we have done, then?
Above what we have been previously doing, yes.
Very good. That's a, that's an important process to extend the life of streets and avenues. That milling overlay, it does a really good job.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question on the Wilmer Avenue.
Sure.
What you have on display right there is you have two small islands there, so the traffic going to the right would have a little better flow, but heading further down to the bottom of the page at the intersection, there are no islands for a right-turn lane. Is there any reason why it's only going to the north and not to the south, or the people who come from the south go right or left when they come to that way?
Right. Essentially, the, the traffic that area is going to receive from the south is primarily from Jennio, and the volumes on Wilmer Avenue moving north are going to be greater than the volume created by Jennio. Essentially, that roadway, as Councilmember Fagerly was referring to, will be barricaded just west of that existing driveway access. That will no longer be a through street.
I understand that. Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments?
I'm not sure what the exact terminology is, but I would move approval.
Second. Kevin, if I can bring this to your attention, what action do we need to take here?
His action is a resolution ordering the improvement and directing the preparation of final plans and specifications. This is our seven required affirmative vote criteria.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and order the improvements and directing preparation of plans and specifications as presented. Any discussion?
Just one, one question. Respond to, a woman was speaking here about not being able to get flood insurance for her home. And Kevin, I thought at one time, didn't we approve the insurance policy that was available through the federal government for, to have the residents apply to that, or weren't we eligible?
No, sir. FEMA requires all mortgage holders, well, the mortgage business requires all mortgage holders inside the floodplain to purchase annual flood insurance. Ironically, we just got the new floodplain maps today, and all of our lakes are still in the flood zone. So as an example, all of those homes along Country Club Drive, Mr. Mayor, and up there that have mortgages and never been flooded out, the adoption of the flood maps and so forth, the adoption of our plan would force them annually to buy insurance that they'll never use. Now, having done that action, all other people who desire it, maybe down on 10th and Candy Ojai, are prohibited from buying it because we're not members of the program. So it was one of those items about 20 years ago that realtors brought to our attention, and that was the decision the council made. So we are not members of the program, and she is correct, she cannot buy flood insurance.
Well, that has, that has my concern. I wasn't aware of that, and we have the ongoing issue with the stormwater retention area, and I don't understand it, but we've had the Stormwater Task Force for quite a few years dealing with this issue. We've had bar engineering issues, a huge report on what the cost would be to help alleviate the problem, and it's, I thought it was $5 billion, if the number strikes me right, to redo the entire city with, to deal with the issue of flooding. But in short, long and short, anything from Lake Woganga and ditch 23A backs up to 10th Street. All the water backs up to 10th Street, and there's no way of changing that unless we raise, raise everything up, and even then, we're still going to have the problem with it flooding and spreading out, dispersing through the areas. I don't know if that's been explained to you, but.
Yeah, but I'm on 10th, I'm on 2nd.
You're on 2nd. Okay.
I said I don't want to have what happened.
I understand that. But I guess regarding that issue, we've all been under, quite a while in the council. I know every time this comes up with the flooding, we get our barricades out, and our city staff does a good job for barricading the streets in that area again, and any improvement, as Mr. Fagerly said, that can be made, I really wish you'd consider, and I'd be interested in looking to see what the additional cost would be for a baffling system to help at least alleviate some of the overload we have on that, on that storm sewer in that area. I just am putting my trust in your expertise to help come up with any options that we might want to consider. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll, are there anyone scheduled to speak?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I never looked at the chart over there, but you could just ask them if they want to come forward.
I'll get it.
Looks pretty blank.
Pretty blank.
With that, we'll move into the Public Work Safety Committee report for February 11th, 2013. Mr. DeBlick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Work Safety Committee met February 11th, 2013. First item on the agenda was public comments. There were no public comments offered at the meeting, and item number two was the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Facilities Plan and EIW presentation, which was for information only. Paul Jurick of Bolton, Inc., presented the financial plan and environmental information worksheet for the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Project. Both documents will be presented to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for review after the public hearing is held and public comments are received. Both documents are a prerequisite to PFA funding and qualify the city for placement on the priority list. The plan poses resizing the lift station on the Midwest Technology Campus to allow for future expansion of the surrounding area. The interceptor line is proposed to be replaced in conjunction with the reconstruction of Lakeland Drive. From the lift station south to Wilmer Avenue, and the size of the pipe will be increased to allow for added capacities. Two alternatives are proposed, with the preferred being number two, at a lesser cost and less disturbance to the urban area surrounding Lakeland Drive. Item number three on our agenda was consideration of an ordinance amending Charter 13, Article 3. The city administrator Stevens presented an amendment to an ordinance governing the removal of snow, dirt, and rubbish from the public sidewalk. The recommendation is to change 12 hours to 24 hours in Section 1B to be consistent with the remainder of the ordinance. A motion was made by, made and seconded for the following, would be to introduce an ordinance amending for amendment for hearing on March 4th of 2013, and I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to introduce the ordinance amendment for hearing on March 4th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number four, under miscellaneous, I just wanted to thank your Public Works Department for the fine job they have been doing with snow removal from the streets over the, with the past several snowstorms. And if there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the business of the committee, and if there are no questions, I'll motion to file these minutes.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the February 11th, 2013 Public Work Safety Committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Labor Relations Committee report for February 13th, 2013. Counselman Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We met February 13th in Conference Room 1, City Office Bellings. Members present were myself, Mr. Dacken, City Councilman, Dennis Anderson, City Council, Tim Johnson, City Council, Charlene Stevens. Others present were Mayor Frank Yanish, Councilmember-elect Audrey Nelson, Wayne Nelson, Ken Warner, David Baker, City Clerk Kevin Halliday, Finance Director Mr. Okun, Steve Okun, City Assessor Pat Erickson, City Assessor Judy Thompson, and John Sullivan. A meeting was called to order at public comments, and Mr. Nelson addressed the committee on behalf of the Wilmer Movement 4 Group. Mr. Nelson commented and thanked the council for moving forward to address adoption of a code parliamentary procedure for the city council and full participation by the council in the Vision 2040 initiative, engaging in an organizational study of the city and for considering a conflict of interest policy. Mr. Nelson also stated that the group remains willing to contribute $5,000 towards the cost of the organizational study for the city. I thank Mr. Nelson for his coming and also stated his opinion that the $5,000 contribution was not necessary. Other members also thanked Mr. Nelson for his comments and for coming to the committee. Mr. Sullivan apologized to the city council for his previous statements regarding the timeliness of material sent to the city council for meetings. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Item number two was consideration employee vacancies, appraisers 2, and accounting clerk. Ms. Stevens described, described the two vacancies before the council for their consideration and the history of the vacancies. Kevin Halliday explained on the, expanded on the vacancy in the assessing department, including in the previous unsuccessful attempts to fill the position internally. Committee members had questions regarding the timeframe for training, as well as certifications necessary and the future possibility of working with the county on a consolidation of a department into one department. After further discussion, it was moved by Councilmember Anderson, and seconded by Mr. Dacken, to advertise for the position of appraiser 2, and the motion carried. And I will move the recommendation to committee for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Has been made and seconded to advertise the position for appraiser 2. Is there any discussion?
Just one comment. I hope that with this intention, that what we're planning on doing in this, with filling this position, still does not distract us from the issue that I think we're still in the process, or are in the process, after we get the reorganizational study done, that our goal and intent is to eventually move this. I believe that was kind of the consensus of the committee many years ago after reviewing Mr. Schmidt's report with the county, with the county that he had back in 2010 in October. And I know that Ms. Stevens and staff have been working and discussing with the county, and they're not interested at this time, but I, I believe there is an interest there to handle it, and I'm just curious with that, Ms. Stevens, I'm sure you want to comment.
Sure.
By doing this, are we training, would we be training, or when filling the position, would we be filling and training a new employee with the possibility that new employee might not be needed or might not be able to be collaborated into a job for that individual with the county? Or is the county going to require them to have their own special skills? And that's the only key thing that I question is, if we do this, are we doing a disservice to hire that person then, six months down the road, after attrition and retirement of some of the people in our assessing department, have the situation with that person being out of a job?
Councilmember Amen, I can respond to that, and I would say, first of all, no, we are not doing a disservice to an individual by hiring somebody for a position that, and I certainly would never, would not recommend that we hire somebody for a position that we expect to eliminate in six months or less. The need for the appraiser is, it is a necessary position now in our immediate, in our immediate needs. It is also a position that would be necessary in any consolidated department between the city and the county. When the city and county looked at consolidating the two departments and looked at the numbers of appraisers, it doesn't necessarily mean that there are less appraisers needed. And Councilmember Anderson and I had attended a meeting today where the county representatives were present, and this topic came up, and, you know, it's the, of the opinion that the same number of appraisers are needed whether the city does the appraising and the county does the county appraising, or whether it's a consolidated department. What is gained by combining them is maybe some efficiencies of operations and efficiency of service to the public, not necessarily a cost savings in terms of the number of employees, so. And I think that because also, the timeframe for any consolidated department is probably further out than a year, is at least a year to two, perhaps even, to begin those discussions again, and then to actually consolidate a department, it certainly is worthwhile for the city to proceed with the hiring of this position and developing and training this individual. Hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, it does. I, I just don't want to have duplication and then have, have something happen where we're going to be restructuring again after hiring an employee.
Absolutely understand.
Was the motion made?
Yes.
It was, and seconded.
And seconded.
Well, I got, I got another comment. I spoke with Mr. Fagerly. Rick's necessary. Is it true? Is it true that the county charges about $18 per parcel right now to the townships?
I do not, I couldn't answer that for you this evening, I'm not certain of that.
I can make a further comment. They do that, my understanding is that price times their number of parcels, but they work on the quintile or 20% of those parcels. So it's kind of a math hidden equation.
Is there a reason why you ask, Councilman?
Well, I'm just trying to put the numbers together, and again, it sounds to me like this direction to go. And I hate to say it, but it looks to me that we have a little bit of duplication maybe, not the fact that our staff isn't talented and doing their job, but I think with consolidating it into one organization or one group is ultimately what's going to have to happen. I think the sooner we do it, the better off we are. I've heard it one or two years, we were so close with this back in 2010, we were just about ready to go ahead with it, and we didn't. I hope that, you know, we can maybe... I don't think it's fair to the employees to have this burden over their head and a threat of a job loss or no job. I would rather just deal with it and move forward with it as soon as possible so that we, everybody knows what direction we're going, for the sake of us and the employees too. Just my personal comment. Thank you.
You already did.
I'm sorry, we already did, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to reaffirm, we were at the quarterly meeting of the schools, county, and city this afternoon. We discussed this at some length and then a little bit after the meeting as well. The county is very interested in making this happen. It's a matter of timing and it's a matter of their priorities, but they are very on board and willing to do this. So it's just a matter of timing, but it's going to happen, I'm confident.
Thank you. Councilman DeBlick.
One question along those lines, if we would have the, turn our assessing department over to the county, would that remove our authority with the border review? Would the county do the border review, or would that still come back to the city council to conduct a border review?
It should still be the city, I believe, because the townships offer their own border reviews. So the local government authority is still there.
So we would still maintain the authority with the border review?
Correct.
Thank you. That motion was made and seconded. Further discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve was right, the county charges the township, but it's like $12 to $13 a parcel and a little bit more for a commercial. I would say, you know, hold off on this until the study is done. It's going to take someone that we hire a couple of years to get licensed. She'll get, he, she will get her certification, but it's going to take two years before the person is licensed. And I don't know if there's a guarantee that the county would hire one of our employees or not. I mean, the city of Litchfield eliminated their full-time assessor three years ago, and they kept her on part-time. I'm on a video that theirs go many years ago. Hutchinson doesn't have one, the county does it for them.
I think where we are, Councilmember, is we have explored all alternatives to, and we currently have only two appraisers on staff, having previously had four. We have also, in the last budget cycle, eliminated a part-time clerical position, and we also eliminated an appraiser tech position a while ago. And we're just finding that we are not able to keep up with doing the quintile and doing the appraisers with the two that we have. And we are paying overtime for one appraiser, and then the other individual is an exempt employee who is working additional hours, and we're just not able to keep up with getting it done. We've looked at internal, we've looked at internal promotion, we have looked at contracting out, and I think we're just concerned, and that's where the concern is coming from. And with no set date of going forward with any kind of consolidation, that it is the priority of the county at this time, or maybe even it just, we're kind of dragging out a process and we're, you know, we run the risk of not being able to perform the quintile, I guess, and then the state having to come in and do that for us. That's the risk that we take by not filling this position. And again, in my conversations with the county administrator, the position would be necessary in a consolidated department. I mean, the same number of appraisers would be needed.
Has the county administrator lightened his position at all?
Again, the county's position has always been that they are open to this, it's just the, their priorities have changed. They did a reorganization study, and their priorities, I mean, I don't want to speak for the county, but I think they've been rather clear with what their priorities are, and they're working on Health and Human Services, they're working on some other things with their downtown office, and that is what is, you know, they're setting their priorities, and that's the purview of the county commission to do so.
Thank you.
So we hired two part-time people from the county?
We did.
Have they done their job? No?
I believe, Mr. Halliday?
Well, we'd re-say that we contracted with two full-time people from the county.
Yeah.
And put them on the new construction, because the new construction is paramount to get that documentation into the records. So that's what they completed for that two contracts.
We had that much new construction? We needed two part-time people to do that?
That was the best contract we could arrange with them, and they both worked on it to hit all those, and new construction being all work, you know, new roofs, new windows, all those things that they go out and look at, not just new homes. We certainly didn't have any new homes, so all those permits were all monitored for that contracted price.
So if they come in and fill out a permit, we know they're making some improvements to the home. We're still sending them out to look at the project after it's been re-roofed?
Yes, we do, on every one of the new ones. Normally, our staff goes right out with the closeout inspection with the building inspectors. But those that we couldn't get to this year, we felt we needed to make certain somebody reviewed those. And some could be new garages, some could be new additions, some could be a new home, but they had to be reviewed.
So how do some counties get by with it when they haven't been to a property for four years and they've added a big addition on, and it's not even on the records? And I find it, and I go to the county and I tell them, "Oh, really? Oh, we'll have to send someone out there." I can't believe that the state is so strict for one municipality or county and so lenient on another county.
The state has indicated to us that they'll be reviewing our progress and reviewing all those properties, but just that statement alone is kind of a statement on the caliber of work you want to do on your own appraisals. Do you want to have somebody have a $50,000 addition on their home and not pay taxes on it for four or five years? Is that fair to everybody else? And I realize the bottom line is we have one big pie, where we get our tax levy certified against all those properties, and it's just a re-division. But the integrity is what we strive for and what we've improved over all the years from having our four staff earlier, our CAMA system, our digital work on all these properties, and our constant reviews, is to keep it fair and equitable all the way through the process. Says kind of shoddy work when someone says, "Oh, really? You found something that we haven't?" That's unique. I guess I wouldn't want to digress to that level. And I recommend it.
But coming with a permit, you know, and adding a roof isn't going to add that much value to assessment. Sometimes you've got to replace the roof just to maintain your value.
Well, they, I don't know how they deal with that. That's that appraisal workload inside with the value they do with a new home or the new roof or new siding. But they do go out and review it, and in those reviews, that's their opportunity to remeasure things and make sure everything was correct. It's one of their standard procedures, so...
Well, you would think that they would have done that when they entered it on the computer, the tech did, because it's all digital, and the CAMA now. And they've been doing this for how many years? So unless they came with a permit to add an addition, it shouldn't have changed their dimensions and stuff. That wouldn't...
No, but that's one of the things they do in the quintile, is they do remeasure parts of the building. So, I mean, that's, when they say you have to walk on the property, they're not talking about walking through the grass and keep on going. I mean, they take a look at the home inside and out, and those things do take the time. So it's a matter of integrity, and it's a matter of staying on tune with that quintile and the new construction.
I think it just says you have to view it once every five years. It doesn't mean you have to walk through it or walk on it, you can just drive by it and view it from the street.
I don't think that would meet the State Department of Revenue's criteria.
I think it would.
Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm really torn on this, because I visited today with our city assessor, and I can tell that there is some concern on their part that they need this third person. But the issue of the consolidation came, and then we never did understand why it was disapproved. What I heard was that it was not cost-effective, and I would respectfully ask for that documentation that, from our previous city administrator, that it was not cost-effective, because the county was ready to do it, was ready to combine. So we've let that period of time go by. So quite frankly, I would like to see the previous city administrator's documentation that states that it was not cost-effective at that time to join. Again, it's my understanding that the county administrator was willing, so, and that has gotten us to where we are right now. But I can assure you, Mr. Mayor, that in talking with our assessor, they are concerned.
Is that possible to have a, to have the documentation done?
Councilmember Anderson has a question, I think, before I respond to that.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. It was the city council that turned that down. We did that. The city administrator may have made a recommendation, but we didn't move forward with it. That was us. No?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, I, I'm pretty sure it was in the labor...
Let's say it's bad information.
It was in the labor committee. I believe the previous city administrator stated that it wasn't beneficial to us to move forward at this time. That's all I heard. I didn't see any documentation or proof or numbers, I didn't know what the negotiation, what negotiations took place, and what was the outcome of the negotiation with Mr. Kleindal of the county at that time. I never received any information on it either. We just took it as a recommendation.
The information, I can't speak for what the previous city administrator provided or did not provide, but there was a study done, there was the financial data with that, and I believe what the statement was, is that there was no cost-saving to the overall taxpayer in doing that, and that there were service losses to the city in doing so. And then based upon that, I think is why the Labor Relations Committee and/or the city council chose not to go forward. But Councilmember Anderson is correct, is that the city council chose not to go forward with that. The county was willing to move forward. And I guess I just would say, kind of for the record, continuing to discuss a proposal that was put forward two years ago and was rejected is really kind of a moot point at this point, because to begin, to go forward now is starting over. I mean, staff have changed in both organizations, the county is doing some other restructuring on top of it, and so it really means that to go forward with a consolidated effort again is really a restart of the process. And again, I think there's interest on both parties in doing that, it's just, you know, one party is focusing on some other priorities at this time.
So I'm having a difficult understanding, Councilman, what was important two or three years ago is no longer important, the way it sounds.
I'm not going to speak for the county administrator nor the county commission. I mean, they've made their, they have made their decision, they are working on some other things. You know, we do not have a proposal for consolidation before the city council at this time.
I won't go into some of the other things that I know about it, but...
Well, I do have the report from Mr. Schmidt, but it does explain some of the financial issues. That was back in October 15th of 2010. I brought the report, dug it out tonight, thinking there might be some questions on it. I believe some of it was due with employees, the asking groups, and there was some concern there, obviously, as I would be too if I was one of them. But it came up whether the county charged $11 per parcel or more. There is a little, there is little question that 1.4 million being transferred to the county over the next seven years would take care of our per parcel obligations for many years to come. We need to agree on the matter in which the issue is presented and how the question will be answered if asked. It gives us some understanding of what the costs were, but I don't, I don't believe we were really involved in negotiation of that. I think it was the city administrator, Larry. I don't think it came down to the county commissioner or the city council person, so I just want to make sure if we do this, it's not going to have an impact. That's my primary...
Yeah, and I understand that, Councilman Roman, and I can't speak to the negotiations, I was obviously not here at that time and such. I mean, it's, so I think, you know, the question that you had asked and I responded to is that would the hiring of this position preclude any consolidation in the future? No, it would not. And the position, again, in my conversations with the county administrator, believes that the position is necessary in a consolidated department as well. And he has no qualms about the city moving forward with the hiring of that, if that more clearly answers your question.
Yeah, it does, thank you very much. I know, I just want to say thank you again to the staff in the assessing department for working the overtime. Hopefully enjoy the paycheck.
I'd call for the question.
Okay, the question is to advertise for the position of Appraiser 2. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. You have a counsel?
Yes.
Next page.
I got it here.
Okay.
Mr. Okun's reviewed the staffing needs in the finance department as it related to the vacancy of the payroll clerk. Mr. Okun stated that he would continue to explore options, but the position also filled other roles in the department. Mr. Anderson, Mr. Johnson inquired as to the options for outsourcing payroll. After a lengthy discussion, it was moved and seconded to advertise the position of Accounting Clerk, and the motion carried. I'd move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to advertise the position of Accounting Clerk. Is there any discussion? I have a question, is, it says to advertise for the position of Accounting Clerk, and the other one says to advertise for the position of Appraiser 2, but it doesn't give any timeframe. How long are we going to advertise?
Typically, we post positions for a couple, for seven days, maybe two weeks. I mean, it depends on the number of applicants we get. If we feel we'll get sufficient, we'll post it for seven days. If we would like to leave it out there a little longer, it may be two weeks or more.
Is that something that needs to be put in this?
No, it does not. I mean, each position is advertised according to the need.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number three was the conflict of interest policy. Ms. Stevens reviewed the history of the conflict of interest policy, stated it had been a goal of mine and was first discussed in December. Ms. Stevens stated that the two policies were before the committee, one to revise the existing personnel policy 2.9, which applies to employees, and a new policy that would apply to elected and appointed officials. I also stated that the adoption of the policy would add greater transparency for the public as well as a guidance for elected and appointed officials. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded, Mr. Anderson made a motion to amend and adopt the personnel policy 2.9 as drafted by the city attorney. Mr. Dokken seconded the motion, which carried. One comment, what failed to happen in your, in your packet that was mailed out, there was, the conflict of interest policy was not included. And so I called Audrey later this afternoon, and she didn't have time to get into the file to do that, but I passed, I made some copies and passed those out to you. In light of all this, I'm sure you haven't had time to review it and to look it over. In light of all this, I'm sure you haven't had time to review it and to look it over. So I would like to table that, this particular action on our conflict versus interest policy until another city council date so that the council people newly locked also have a chance to review it.
Excuse me, Councilmember Roman. I apologize. It was not included with the agenda packet, but it was included with the Labor Relations agenda, which went out to the council. So I believe every council member has, has received it. It just did not get, it just did not get included again with the agenda packet. So I believe it has been seen. Now, it's up to the council whether you feel that's sufficient. I mean, you certainly can defer these two items another two weeks or if the council is comfortable, it has been distributed.
Thank you for explaining that to me. I appreciate it. I was concerned that they didn't get the information, so I made copies tonight.
Yeah, yeah, there was some confusion and I was out of the office when you called and such, and I also didn't get the message. But again, it was not included here with your agenda booklet, but I believe every council member did receive it with the mailing that was sent out for the Labor Relations Committee a week ago. And both, 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 both the employee policy and the city council policy were in that. So, but again, it's the council's choice whether you wish to table this for another two weeks or take action this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommendation to adopt the personnel policy 2.9 as drafted by the city attorney.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to amend and adapt the personnel policy 2.9 as drafted by the city attorney. Is there any discussion?
One comment, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, staff and Robert, for your work on this policy. There's one thing that I did, I did see in the Brainerd policy that showed, and I made a copy of it here to the city council people. And it was just, just to have documentation for the people that serve, including ourselves and the boards and commissions, and they had acknowledgement stating that they had read it and it was signed off and it was printed. And I'm just wondering if that could be included. I wanted that to be part of, part of our ongoing conflict of interest policy so we don't have anybody saying they didn't receive it or they didn't read it. And I'm just wondering what your thoughts might be on that.
Councilmember Roman, I know what you're referring to. There was a, as you said, one sheet, acknowledgement of receipt that was at the end of the sample policy you provided from the city of Brainerd. There'd be absolutely no reason you couldn't include that with this policy and have that just be your matter of practice going forward. It would be to have every council member and member of any board or commission subject to this sign off on that.
Also on there, Mr. Scott and Mr. Mayor and the council for information on the very last page. I ran out of regular paper. I use my legal paper at work. There's a conflict of interest checklist for elected and appointed officials. And in that, it has the city of Brainerd, of course, but I think we could apply that very easily to include the right, the right information as the website and everything. But I'm also wondering if we wouldn't, it wouldn't be beneficial if we should include that also, the first and the last page. And it would add your telephone number to that also, your name and your telephone number for the city attorney. So if they have any questions prior to the meeting, that may be a conflict of interest. They'd have an opportunity to discuss it with you or the city administrator. It states also further down. And then that name and number be included also. It's a very in-house kind of a thing, but I just want to make sure that we do, we do it right. And I'm just wondering if you have any objections or any comments on that.
I can offer a brief comment on that. I, again, am aware of what you're referring to, that checklist that the city of Brainerd had in their policy. I reviewed that when I was drafting this and I thought it was a little convoluted. And I, what I attempted to do was, in the policy itself, make it very clear and establish a clear procedure within the actual policy. And that's reflected in paragraph two of article five on your second to last page. My objective in doing that was to just have it all within the policy so you could look at the policy. Any council member that had a concern could look at this and know exactly what steps to take. We can certainly, you know, prepare something additional or distribute something along with the acknowledgement of receipt that you mentioned that would have my phone number on it and the city administrators as well, if you think that would be helpful, that would be more of a clerical thing, I think. But we can certainly do that.
Yeah. Well, my concern is that we cover our bases and that they have access to you and to Shirley and on any information, so.
Certainly. And my view of this is I think this can just be direction that we take from, from the council on this. I don't know that it needs to formally be a part of the motion.
Okay. That's my understanding. I didn't want to railroad something through without it going through the council or so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Anderson made a motion to adopt a conflict of interest policy for elected and appointed officials as drafted by the city attorney. And Mr. Dawkins seconded the motion and carried it and would move that recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor. That would be attachment B.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adapt the motion to adopt a conflict of interest policy for elected and appointed officials as drafted by the city attorney. Is there any discussion? Councilman Nolan.
One other comment. Mr. Scott, as far as violating the statutes or the conflict of interest policy, I didn't read anything in there upon your review of our current policy as far as actions if a person is found to be violating the conflict of interest policy. Is that something that should have been included?
In my opinion, the answer would be no. The reason for that is this is, the subject of conflict of interest is very wide-ranging and is very dependent on the unique facts of every case. There is law out there on this, but to try and boil it down and distill it into one streamlined policy that you could refer to, I didn't think that was an appropriate function of the policy. The main objective that, at least from my perspective, the main thing that I think the policy accomplishes is it alerts council members and anyone subject to this policy of what a conflict of interest is generally defined and establishes a procedure for them to go through if they think they've got any concerns about it at all. And anytime a concern like that is identified and this procedure is implemented, then it's up to myself as the city attorney, possibly the city administrator, to sort through this and look at the unique facts involved and provide the proper advice. If a member is guilty of violating this policy, you know, we'll have to look and see what the consequences are. They can be wide-ranging. It can range from the actual action taken by the body itself is invalidated to specific consequences for the individual, possibly including criminal implications. So to try and boil it down into a policy, I didn't think was beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
One other comment question. I wish you would have been at the meeting, but I could have called you. I didn't have time. But I knew you were going to be here tonight. So thank you for asking other questions. As far as other boards and commissions, you mentioned in your cover letter that a lot of other entities that we give money to or we donate money to, groups that we give money to, to ongoing, to do ongoing efforts with the city are not part of this conflict of interest policy. My question to you is, should it be, if we're going to be transparent with giving our funds to another group and entrusting them with public funds, should they also be held to the same standards so that there is not a conflict? Because I think that could be perceived by the public. I just want to be clear on this. I want to, I want to be crystal clear on this so there's nobody going around saying, oh, yeah, well, so-and-so did this because he's on that committee. And I know it's hard in a small town, but is it possible to draft something regarding in the future, when we donate or give money to other organizations in town to make them live by a certain quote of ethics and a conflict of interest policy to be contingent with that money that's given them? So we could actually do a mandate like the state and the federal government does to us, that you would be mandated to comply with the city of Wilmer's conflict of interest policy so that we don't feel that there's collusion or anything going on? And would that be a good thing? I know I've asked you many questions all in one.
Well, I think I understand what you're getting at. The short answer is for a conflict of interest policy that you're adopting for yourself, for your own body and for the commission subject to your authority. I mean, that, that isn't something you can impose on any other body. That's not something you can, the conflict of interest policy, you can't impose that on, you know, any other organization, whether you've donated money to them or not. They have their own independent authority. They decide what policies they'll follow. What you can do within reason is for any grant or donation or funding request that comes before you or that the council makes to another entity, is establish reasonable conditions on how that money can be used. Again, on a case-by-case basis, if you, you know, have a specific application before you and there's a concern or just a consensus of the body on how that money should be used, establishing some guidelines and procedures, limitations, that's completely fine. You can do that. But it has to happen at the time of the grant and as a part of the contract, hopefully, that is set up for that.
Yeah. Well, that's my concern. I don't know if other cities have done that. I just think, talking with different people, and I'm sure we all hear it, some people more than others on the negative side of government, that they see the interaction and sometimes they consider it looks as collusion. If we could somehow clear that up, I would like to work with you back in the Labor Relations Committee and maybe to address that another time.
I think Councilmember Omen, if I may interrupt, what Mr. Scott's referring to is kind of the, is a contract with individuals for a service and such. And I think that was something that was, was discussed previously by the council and kind of referred to the finance committee to look at that, look at the policies for that and establishing some of those parameters for some of the groups that we fund and what those funding agreements are. And it could be addressed in that manner.
As long as it gets addressed, I'd really appreciate it. I value your input, Mr. Scott. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
No, no further business. We adjourned at 5:40. And I'll move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for February 13th, 2013. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. I'll ask the city staff and the city council if they want to take a short break or if they want to continue.
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 Continue?
Continue. Bye.
Okay. With that, we will go into the consideration of ordinance amending chapter three. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, we've requested the city attorney to draft an amending ordinance to our chapter three of on-sale, on-premise consumption of alcohol. We have a criteria in our own code that limits persons eligible for a license to only one establishment at a time, one on-sale, and no other interest in another on-sale or an off-sale. That is in conflict, or more restrictive, rather, not in conflict. It is more restrictive than the state of Minnesota's criteria for that. We have a project coming up with one of our establishments in town who are going to remodel their current establishment and have two restaurants out there, which would necessitate with the conversations with the state of Minnesota of having two liquor licenses for those. We need to remove our restriction and be compatible with the state law in order for that to happen. It is staff's recommendation that we have that adopted. Initial step is to set a hearing, and we're recommending to do that March 4th, 2013.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce an ordinance and set a hearing date for March 4th, 2013, for the consideration of persons eligible for liquor license. Is there any discussion? And that would be a motion?
Standard motion, sir.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Kevin, if you'd like to explain a second one to us.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the Civic Center Arena has rented space to the Wilmer Curling Club, who is going to hold another curling bahn spiel. This one is March 8, 9, and 10. And they have desires to serve alcohol there. And the Civic Center special permit has been completed by Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery, LLC. And it is staff's recommendation that we approve this special Civic Center arena event for the consumption of alcohol on the grounds.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the permit on a roll call vote of consideration of the Civic Center arena special event by on-sale liquor license holder permit. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And the consideration of an ordinance to amend, that motion passes, by the way. Consideration of an ordinance to amend the section nine of zoning ordinance 1060 relating to the appeals.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, this text amendment was initiated by the planning commission, actually at the request of a citizen, following some action taken by the planning commission and council a while back. There was some confusion in the wording of the ordinance regarding the appeals of planning commission decisions. And at some point, a planning commission decision was taken to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The new language very clearly specifies that any appeal shall be taken to the district court. And so that's all this ordinance really does. It's a recommendation of staff that the council introduce this ordinance to be heard at the March 4th council meeting.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the ordinance for a hearing at March 4th, 2013 council meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we move into the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Anderson, finance.
Finance committee will meet Monday, the 25th, at 4:45.
And Councilman DeBlick.
I believe that would be Councilmember Nelson.
It would be Councilmember Nelson, but I'm not sure. She knows.
I do.
You do.
Yes, I do. Public Works Public Safety is meeting Tuesday, February 26th, at 4:45.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Omen, labor?
I believe the date is the...
It would be February 27th. We do not have agenda items at this time, but it would be February 27th.
It would be the 27th.
At 4:45?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And now Councilman DeBlick on the...
Councilmember Fagerly.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thursday, February 28th, 4:45.
45, February 28th.
Community Development at City Hall.
Thank you. And one miscellaneous we have, Councilman Omen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One comment I had, we've all been discussing for many months now the Vision 2040 Plan and Councilman DeBlick is their representative on that group. I understand they had their first meeting. I talked to him briefly before the meeting. Is it possible that, just to keep abreast of this, I don't know if staff had had time or when this meeting took place, but could we get updates to the minutes and the information sent to us as far as what direction they're moving in? And either that or else have Councilman DeBlick or somebody from the city give us an update as this proceeds?
It's probably appropriate for Councilmember DeBlick to provide an update. We haven't really been formal. I don't think the group has really got a formal minute-taking individual at this point. But I'll defer to Councilmember DeBlick because the liaison...
Yeah, Councilmember Omen, there was, we did meet with the committee met, I remember the date, it was last week. But, you know, several of the members were there. It was a good representation of, of all the partners in the... partners in the, on the group. It was reiterated that the 2040 Plan was a community plan, not just a city plan. And proceeding forward with that, there was going to be some RFPs put out for a presenter, which is being worked on, looking at more than one presenter, or not more than one presenter, more than one proposal for a presenter, so. And that were just, you know, basically early stages of it. Just without my notes, that's about as far as I could go, so.
I have a question, if I may. Who's the chairperson of that group?
There is not really a chairperson. I mean, there are, the various stakeholders are the city, the county, the school district. There's business representation, there's representation from the next group, and it works in a consensus manner, I think, is how I would describe it. I don't know if that, if Councilmember DeBlick agrees with that.
The city is putting how much money into this without a chairperson?
$5,000, as the other stakeholders have as well.
There's the $5,000, and there's also $5,000 by, what is the total budget, 20, almost $30,000?
Yeah. The various partners, including the county, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce and city, the business community have all put forward about $5,000 each, and so it's totaled up to about $30,000 at this time. And there still are some stakeholders that are considering.
Mr. Mayor, the reason why, when, I think I've talked to you, Shirley, and Mr. Warner said many months ago that he was going to give us an update or a summary of the budget, and I asked for that at the last Finance Committee when, or the, before we set the levy on the budget, as to the expenses and how much we're budgeting for and where the money's going to be going. And we've given some money to a group, we don't have any minutes, we don't have any documentation of where the money is going, who's got it, what bank account, zero. And it's like, and we don't have a chairperson yet. I think we should get organized, and I guess that's the reason for it. I hope, I want this done right, and I want also information brought to us and an update, rather than just oral conversation.
I'll defer to Councilmember DeBlick to respond. I mean, he's the council's liaison.
Yeah, Councilmember Almond, that is coming. That, you know, like I say, this meeting was just held, the first meeting, basically that I attended was in the last week here. I don't think the minutes have been finished yet. There is financial accountability there. There is, like I say, there's about $34,000 that is committed to it. And I think it's still in the process of being organized.
Okay.
I will get you some of that financial accountability, where the money is, where it's at.
Yeah, yeah, that, just transparency. I guess we haven't, I don't know what was done in the 2020 Plan when a lot of you were representing this, any in that process, but I would just like to see how it's being done and just open us on it.
Councilman Anderson. Nelson?
I'm just curious, is the structure going to follow the 2020 somewhat from, it's just in the same form, format? Can, will there be committees, those kinds of things? I'm guessing, once you get going, that there will be some?
I think, I mean, to respond to that, Councilmember Nelson, yes. I think, you know, that there's the 2020 model, and I think, you know, it's following a similar model where it was a, you know, a steering team was developed from the various stakeholders. I'm not sure that there was any, that there was necessarily a chairperson of the 2020 effort as much as there was a, you know, that at that time, I believe it was the Chamber of Commerce kind of facilitated the meetings and such. And so the group, you know, so that all of the stakeholders who have participated financially are represented in, are represented in the organization, and I think we're looking at the united way to serve as the fiscal host and such. And so they would, you know, be accountable for the funds and how the funds are spent and such, and those recommendations. And then the group, you know, as Councilmember DeBlick stated, is looking to seek proposals for some additional facilitators and such, and the city is, you know, one partner of, you know, seven or eight in that process. And then how that's structured going forward after a facilitator's selected, I think depends a little bit on how the facilitator wants to move the project going forward and then the outcomes of that. I think, you know, whether work teams come out of the, out of the community strategies, I mean, that certainly is one model the city that was used in the community very successfully before, could be different from that. I guess I can't really answer that next step question quite yet.
So that structure will probably come out of that, of the planning or the...
Out of the planning and out of the community engagement.
Right.
Well, that thing sounds a little dysfunctional to me. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Are there any...
Do you want to explain that comment, Mr. Mayor?
I don't need to.
One question. As far as the meetings on the 2040 Plan, I have an interest in that, I'm sure we all do, but can we, as other council people, just sit in on the meetings to listen? Or is this open to the public, since it's public funds that's being used? Or how transparent are we going to make this? And should we be informed as the council or the mayor to sit in on the meetings and just listen to see what's happening? Should we be notified, or do we want to be notified of another meeting?
Well, I think that's why you selected a liaison to participate on behalf of the council and such. I mean, I think that's why you selected a liaison at your reorganization meeting. Certainly, the full council, as well as the school board, county commission, and other, you know, and citizens at large are expected to be involved in the actual visioning process and community meetings and such. I mean, that was what, my understanding is that was what occurred in Division 2020, is the full city council, the county commission, the Wilmer School District, school board members participated, as well as, you know, civic and business leaders and citizens of the community. And I think that is the expectation this time around as well.
Okay. And just one more comment, I'll be quiet. The other comment was on the taxing jurisdiction meetings that you and Dennis attended. I would love to be at one of those meetings sometimes. Could we just be informed of it? I don't know, we can't have a quorum there. But if it's possible, I'd like to participate or just listen in some of those meetings just to get a better idea of what's going on. Thank you.
Councilman DeBlick.
Yeah, under, going back to the 2040 Steering Committee, I think when, if you look at the 2020 Plan that was put together, when that Steering Committee was functioning, that was the city administrator and the county administrator, school board, several other jurisdictions that were involved with that, and the mayor. The mayor has chose not to be part of the 2040 Plan, the 2040 Steering Committee. Therefore, went to a councilperson to be on it, and I believe you are the alternate, Mr. Almond.
Yeah.
So, I would not have a problem. I know there's a meeting that is in the process of being scheduled for next week. I'll let you know the exact date once that meeting is finalized. And I'd see no problem, if I may. I would like to see no problem with you attending that, so.
I would like to respond to that in the fact that there was no elected officials put on the Steering Committee until I made note of that, and all of a sudden I appeared on it. So, I just want to put that, make that clear. I did not have anything to do with putting myself on it or anything else, so I do want to make that clear, Mr. DeBlick.
I would also like to make it clear that the previous mayor, Mr. Heike, served on the 2020 Plan, and he was the elected official that was on it.
Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We tend to be dancing around the situation here a little bit. I'm not sure I have the current document, but the state of Minnesota, the Office of State Auditor, has a document, it's called Statement of Position on Meeting Minutes. I think if we, if we follow the outline of this document, that there is a record of what took place, and we all have access to it, to the same information, that will be a big step in the right direction, as far as I'm concerned. And so I think we need to improve on our meeting minutes so that we know what took place, and so that the public, the citizens that we represent, know what took place.
Thank you, Councilman. Did you have a question, Councilman Anderson?
I had a comment, and it was kind of parallel, basically, with Councilmember Dawkins. I don't know about this something 28, but I really think that minutes are important. I think we can solve all of these sorts of issues if we just know. That'll take care of it. So I hope that, Councilmember DeBlick, you can take that back.
Thank you.
Any further miscellaneous? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion and second. We are adjourned.